Good afternoon and welcome to your work session. Board of Education. We'll call this work session to order, Ms. Lemon. What do you call the role for us?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsky.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Director Papas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda tonight, and we have a very light agenda for our work session. First is our calendar review and community engagement. So that schedules before you, much less having completed a number of graduations this last week. But we still have a few that are on our agenda and a important board meeting on the 12th of June. But is there anything that should be on here that is not on here?
I can't remember the date for the naturalization ceremony. It might not be in June. It might be in July. It's probably in July.
Friday, June 30.
Oh, yes.
At 9:00 a.m.
Centennial Village.
All right, so there is another event in June? All right. There we go. A few more graduations.
Can we just confirm attendance at the University Schools graduation and the Frontier Academy graduation? Ms. Lemon, can you help us with that, or maybe the board members can?
Two left.
Yeah, I think Kyle and I are University, is that correct?
Yep.
And then I'm planning on Frontier and maybe Michael.
I may be going to Frontier. Sunday, 10 o'clock's a difficult time for me, but I have a couple graduates that I would love to be there to...
That's great.
Yeah, I'm a maybe for Frontier as well, but it might be like really last minute, so I don't need to sit on stage or anything else.
We don't sit on the stage. What happens is I sit in the front row and then with their board president and I go up on stage to accept the class. So their board president says something and then I accept the class, but we're just sitting in the front row. So I can save a place easily if you decide you want to.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for doing that. I appreciate you picking up two more graduations, guys. I know that I was certainly, I'm still tired after seven graduations, so I know it's a lot for all of you to attend, you know, multiple graduations. I appreciate all the effort and the work around that. It was really a lovely week, and I know you all talk about it more, I'm sure, when you get into the boardroom and it's time for board updates, but it was a lot of fun. Just a reminder, the Gap graduation is at D6 Stadium, so that's, you know, that has not always been there in the summertime for those of you who are longer-term board members. That has been indoors at Northridge's, in Northridge's Gymnasium, but I believe this is correct, correct, that it's at the stadium on June 24th at 8:00 a.m.
So three more.
Yep, three more. We're almost there.
Yeah. They're good events. Anything else that we need to discuss on our upcoming agenda?
Just a reminder, President Matthews, that the June, the second board meeting in June, the board voted, oh gosh, back in February or so to cancel that board meeting. So the June 22nd board meeting, 21st board meeting will be our last board meeting of the year. That meeting will be the meeting with the budget, the proposed budget for the '23-'24 school year, so that's a big one.
Yeah, that'll be a big meeting on June 12th. It's one of the bigger meetings.
Is it June 12th? Sorry, I said the wrong date. A lot of contracts, final contracts, a lot of final purchases for next school year, and then the budget as well.
You're looking for those things as they come through.
Yeah, and don't hesitate to reach out if you have questions. We're happy if, you know, if you want to go a little deeper on any of those pieces. Prior to the board meeting, you know, Megan and I can make ourselves available to talk budget or, you know, just let us know what you need.
When might we be able to do that? Obviously, we don't have the budget yet, but is there a time frame you think?
Megan told me today she's making progress on it. I would think the week before we would be able to do that, so that week of June 3rd, I would think we could do that. And, but I will confirm with her when we could do those if folks want to.
Maybe go to schedule time even in advance of getting the budget, just to make sure we're on...
Yeah. There's also a note in your weekly bulletin to schedule with Amy to meet with Megan, CFO, sponsor, and Assistant Superintendent Hinson and me to talk about, I know some questions have come up around energy and where we are with energy. And so we thought we would do some individual meetings to give you time to really understand all the energy stuff that has gone in through the bond and then talk to you about where we are and then get some guidance too in terms of what do we want to do, you know, next fall around those pieces. You've had some speakers, or a speaker at least, in the boardroom talking about energy conservation, talking about electric buses and solar panels. So we want, there was an update in your bulletin about the, where we are with electric buses and some of the grants for electric buses. So you saw that, but we want to give you an opportunity to ask questions that you might have. So if you'll get scheduled with Amy with us, that'd be great.
I'm like trying to shut stuff off and then... Anything else on our calendar review and community engagement?
I guess I have one question. We had about, we had in the past done the candidate input forums and are we...
So we would welcome your feedback on that. Amy and I have gone back and forth on whether or not that, you know, that is useful to do that candidate information. If we want to do that, we would want to pick some time here in June to do that. Amy has indicated to me that it's also pretty straightforward information that we could just put on the website, but I think we would take your, you know, your input on that and your thoughts on, you know, do you all want to dedicate another evening in June to do some candidate information kind of night stuff? So that, you know, that's...
I might point out that CASB is hosting an election seminar for anyone who's interested Friday, June 16th. I believe it will be in person from 9:00 to 11:30, but they're also recording it, so anyone who...
Colorado School Boards Association is doing that. So Amy, maybe we could, that, maybe that's information that Ms. Myers could push out through social media, and we could also push out to all the board members so that you all can share with your networks. That's good to know.
The Secretary of State will be there as well.
Is it virtual? Or you said it's in person?
I think it's in person, 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. at the CASB office, but it will also be recorded and posted the next day if people can't make it. And partnership with the Colorado Secretary of State's office.
Oh, wow. That's good to know.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not aware if they've done that before. Maybe they have and we just haven't heard about it.
That could be.
Yeah, but we can push something out on our social media regarding that for, and certainly, so Ms. Lemon, when do we push, when are candidates able to pick up their packets?
Early August.
Early August, so we can't really send to individuals yet since we don't have the packets then.
It says the seminar will provide an overview of the school director election process, including the roles and responsibilities of boards, designated election officials, and county clerks and recorders, candidate eligibility, and the petition process. Additionally, it will provide an overview of campaign finance, including committees, disclosure reports, and filing requirements, contributions, and more. So I guess we could do something that's specific to District 6, but I don't really think there's going to be anything that won't be covered there, and that's free to anyone who wants to access it, so.
Before, I think, hasn't the chamber done something as well?
They have, and I think they're not thinking they're gonna, they've done an election forum, kind of a candidate forum thing in the past where they invited candidates from all types of elections. So, you know, if city council election, school board election, and then there would be, then we could sign up and, you know, Christina Crane in the past, prior to Amy would go and be there and have a table and share information with candidates at that. But I don't think they're going to do that. I think they're going to do more of a forum where they actually interview candidates and possibly, and put, you know, give candidates opportunity to get out there like they did with this last election, rather than host an event where different election bodies would come in and provide information. I don't think they're going to do that event this year. Is that your understanding, Ms. Lemon, still?
And if we did something, would all of us be expected to be there? Is that something we need to try to align lots of schedules or is it three?
Well, that would be ideal, but it wouldn't, you wouldn't have to have everyone. I think we've done those in the past without everyone there, and sometimes we've done it where each board member had something they shared, and then sometimes we've done it where just board leadership shared. So I think that's kind of up to your druthers, what you all are thinking.
I just know it's going to be difficult to make calendars align.
Well, and that's the difficulty, Ms. Lemon and I had. So we started to down this path thinking we would do that here in June, and usually we wouldn't, it seems to me like we've done it usually in August, which is a little easier to schedule, but because some folks have already come out, many folks have already come out and announced, we felt like June was probably, you know, more timely and maybe more appropriate. But when we tried to find a date or dates in June, it became really difficult to do that.
If a candidate wanted to get more information, they could schedule a time to meet with either of you?
Absolutely, yeah. I'm, yeah, I'm very willing to meet with potential candidates. I'm happy to do that, and I think President Matthews is as well. Yeah, Amy and I together too, just to talk about information or process, those pieces, absolutely.
And I'll say just for anybody that might be listening or catching this at some point and interested, the Secretary of State's office is really, really helpful.
Yes.
That's about as helpful a group as I've ever found in terms of trying to help you understand the legalities or everything and how to file and anything that you need with respect to the Secretary of State's office. They call you back, they are just really, really helpful. So if you have any questions or wondering about it, that is always I go to, just to call the Secretary of State's office, the Elections Division, and they can provide most of the answers to your questions. You're nodding your head. You called them recently.
Yeah, like you call them and you get a human being. It's not like a phone tree. You just get a person right away, and they're very helpful. And they email you to, you know, summarize the conversation you had. Super helpful.
Anything else we need to discuss on this? We'll just continue to talk about it, see if we can find a date, if it makes sense, if we can help people.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe even in August if we can't make it work in June.
Okay.
I think, you know, that with, part of canceling that second meeting in June is that opens it up for people to make plans, and I think a lot of people probably have plans, us included, right?
So put it up. Don't do it. They can meet individually.
I don't know.
All right, so that's our calendar review and community engagement. Next is debrief the work session, but before we do that, I just would like to see if there were any other comments or questions about our book review process. And we talked about this last, last work session for a little bit and kind of discussed, we didn't make any substantive changes to what we're doing in our book review process. It will pretty much look the way the last one looked. Try to be as concise as possible and as timely as we can be for everyone's time, but beyond that, it'll look pretty much, pretty much the same as it did the last time. But were there any, any questions or follow-ups about this, specifically about process and the way that it, way that it works?
I guess I would just like to clarify that when we start this process, we will hear from the appellant's and Mr. Tuttle again, or, and then that gives us the opportunity to have some discussion then, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Could just, so just wanted to clarify that.
And we will hear from the appellant's first, I believe, and then hear from Mr. Tuttle and their decision second. Then we will, we will have time to ask questions of the appellant's, and if you have a question to clarify, again, these are clarifying questions about this particular book that we might want to ask, but we want to keep our, keep our, keep our focus on this one particular book and to ask questions that you guys have all of, all of the complaints and you have the appeals. So specifically, if you've got something that you read that raised a question, you can certainly ask that of an appellant, but you could also for, for Mr. Tuttle, and we don't have his presentation here, but, so you haven't seen that, but I'm sure it'll be similar to, to the last presentation. And so you do have the committee's decision, and everybody should have read that already. So, you know, no, some of that, but yeah, have time to ask questions of Mr. Tuttle, and then we can talk about this just openly. Once somebody makes a motion, we can, we can talk about the motion. You can make a motion or you can make an amendment to the motion if you wish, and, but once the motion's made, then we can talk about the motion that's been made. You can share your, your thoughts on the, on the book or the decision that you've come to.
Thank you.
Is that pretty clear for everybody? We'll get better at this, I imagine. This may be the last time we do it, but it, but it may not be the last time we do this, so we may, we may get, maybe get very good at this before, before we're done. Any questions? All right. So we're now to debrief the work session, and not a lot to be brief, but Dr. Campos Spitsky, want to go first?
Sure. Yeah, so short and sweet work session, but it's nice to see the calendar, see that everyone's going to get a break this summer, and, you know, hopefully our students and staff will be rejuvenating and all that. So thanks for reviewing the hearing process that we're gonna, that we're gonna have later today. Thanks for reviewing the hearing process that we're going to have later today and yeah, looking forward to the business meeting.
Yeah, same, short and sweet. The graduations were really fun this year. I missed most of them last year, as most people know, but I just was continually amazed by the administration, the principals and all their staff and the way that they organized each, you know, they're all just a little different in their own flair it seemed, but got the same process done. So it was kind of neat to see the different schools, the way they did it and so, congratulations to all the graduees and graduates or looking forward to summer.
Ms. Mash?
Yep, I had a lot of fun celebrating and glad to have a little bit of a break and I hope to get to attend at least one of the other three graduations.
Excuse me, I don't know who initiated including that family that lost that son at Jefferson, so whoever did that, I would do want to extend my gratitude. Boy, am I going to get choked up on this one because this one's weighed heavy on me just thinking about the family that lost their child, but right before the biggest day of, you know, a big celebration. So whoever included and brought that family on board so that they could have that memory, I, thank you.
That's thinking of Sullivan, Ms. Papas.
Yes, just, Dr. Pelch, just I was wondering about Megan's husband and then I also wanted to tell Annette it's really nice to have you back. Yes.
Megan reports today that her husband Ken is doing remarkably well. She is still splitting work between the office and home in order to get her work done. I mean, she lost some time in there that she would have normally, a couple of weeks there that she would have normally had to work on this budget. So what I have asked her to do is to make the budget proposal her priority and I'm confident she is and, you know, she's just very diligent, but he's doing remarkably well and she's really pleased with his recovery and how he's coming along and we'll welcome her back soon.
Thank you.
But she is excused tonight.
And I don't have much to add. It certainly was a short and sweet work session, but you guys have certainly earned a short and sweet work session, all the time that you've put in in the last week. So this work session is adjourned and we'll see...
I'm going to hear from our students.
Do what? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Julie.
Well, I did attend one of the graduations. It was super fun. It was such a nice day and, I don't know, it was a good memory.
Julie was the valedictorian.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do you have any thoughts on the work session?
Just congrats to the grads, especially Julie. I'm super proud of her.
What'd you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm Ikam Jahal. I'm a, I just finished my junior year at Greeley West.
Ikam Jahal. It's good to meet you, Ikam. All right, well now we are adjourned. We'll see you back at 6:00.